Getting the three lines comes out to ninety dollars a month for the three lines. So it's thirty dollars a line, taxes, fees are included. Not that we pay taxes, but everything's included. I put down three examples of phones. I think that the employee can, you know, they're all about the same price. Twenty-four, twenty-seven, iPhone thirteen is twenty-four hundred. The three phones are eighty dollars a month per phone for the three phones. Everything's based on three phones. But I don't know, some people like iPhones, some people like droids. I would suggest maybe the iPhone twelve and the Galaxy two S, the S twenty-one five G. Don't know why the other phones that weren't on the list, but they're not available. There's no activation fee, so we don't have to switch, do anything to have it switched over, pay any fee for that. All three phone numbers are still available through T-Mobile, so we can just switch the phone number without a problem. Once we've switched the phone and the number to T-Mobile, soon as we activate the phone, our relationship with Verizon ends, so the problem that we're having with them trying to get in touch and cancel it, we wouldn't need to do that. It would be deactivated immediately and we'd probably get a final bill, pay that bill, and then we'd just be with T-Mobile. On the other side, I have the outline of what it includes. Unlimited text, smart data on our network. My understanding is that we didn't need unlimited data, so I chose to go with the five G access. So we get five gigabytes per month. Wireless scan protection, unlimited texting abroad if they decide to go abroad. Streaming, all this is included. It wasn't like we could lower the price to get rid of someone else. And there is a hotspot, so even if, for example, the DPW, if we got a, a, what do you call it? A iPad, what do you call it?
Oh, a tablet.
Tablet, thank you for the word, they're going to be iPad. Got a tablet, they could use three gigabytes of hotspot data available that they can use on the iPad. So just have to put your, the hotspot on their phone and they can get that information. So that's available. I talked to Chris, we looked at his phone to see if it was compatible to T-Mobile. It's an iPhone one.
Sixteen?
So.
You don't have the Gita phone?
It didn't really work. So what I did, what I took, I took my.
They were looking for that phone.
I took my, I took my phone. It's the, it's the, I have an XR. I went to T-Mobile. They were able to give me this app called the Test Drive. I downloaded the app and basically they give me a number, a phone number, that I can use through them for a month. So I can use my own phone number, people call me on my phone number, but I'm actually using the T-Mobile network. So I've been driving all over the county, I went to New York City over the weekend. It's everywhere I've gone so far, I haven't had any problems with service or issues, except the same places we have with Verizon. Jackson Avenue's a problem, Bloom Grove Pharmacy, that area down there.
Get trapped in the usual.
In the same places that Verizon was dropping us. So, so far, it seems to be working. Worst comes to worst, we switch and there's no contract involved. Obviously, we pay for the phone, but if it really, really turns out not to work for whatever reason, we just switch back to Verizon, we pay for the phone anyway, and we just move on.
And how soon will this be?
Soon as you and I go over to T-Mobile.
So the three lines would be Chris, Horace, and the police. We're not looking to change it?
No, we're not changing your system, just that one phone.
Yeah. All right, and we still have to look at John?
PD only has one cell?
We have one cellphone that we use, kind of our performance, anything like that, but it's not a smartphone, so our hopes is to get a smartphone. And with our new phone system, you could use that. And from the road, the officer could call somebody back from home instead of, or from the, from the road, it's a little more like a station. So we use this app, so it's all these.
Yeah, that's, not to interrupt you, sorry. So I'm saying, you don't have a phone through us?
No.
Oh, I thought he had.
I asked him.
I don't want to explain that to, I do get smaller and personal from the village.
So we need to look to John, Susan?
Right, right. Well, here's the thing, we can change this contract anytime. There's no like, oh, you signed it for two years. So if we get three right now, we can add four if we want, or we can add five. You know, we can, you know, we can do whatever we want. They have a special right now that says, pricing three lines, you pay for two. So you get the third line free. So technically, I think it's forty-five a month, but we're going to get the three phones for thirty per month.
So we could go there Wednesday and we could just get the five phones?
Yeah, we could get one of five phones, yeah.
So the two?
Right now, we're, right now, we have, we have three phones and one we thought worked.
Yeah, I'm surprised because I remember like using it, something, I got disconnected.
I think it was Wi-Fi, I think it must be Wi-Fi, it might be Wi-Fi calling, I'm not sure. But we're paying for a line, she said, without a phone, that's according to Verizon. But he has the phone and I'm not sure why it's not reading it.
What might have said?
It's a foot phone, but that's what we wanted at the time, a small phone.
That was latest technology.
Yeah, I've had the same phone since we got the same order rates twenty years ago.
It came with the rates.
It came with the order rates.
Yeah, it said, remember you used to open up a bank account, they didn't toast that.
I mean, I think there's going to be, even though it sounds like it's just ninety dollars a month, I mean, we do have to, I think we need to get casings for them, so they're protected, all that kind of stuff.
Do we need a resolution or just okay?
Do we need a resolution?
Um, yeah.
I'll make a motion that's proposed by Jimmy.
I'll second.
Roll call, trustee Kolar?
Yes.
Trustee Kolar?
Yes.
Thanks, John.
Thank you. So on Thursday, Chris, you'll have your phone.
I'm not, like you said, Wednesday we went, I didn't know if I'm available, but if we went Wednesday.
On Wednesday.
And about what after two? After two.
Yeah. Okay. Resolution to appoint Christine Chapman, regular vital statistics, which she is now, and Patricia News as deputy regular for a term of two years. We could, I believe it's, it's up at the end of this, this month, but we could go from December one, two thousand twenty-one, to November thirty of two thousand twenty-three. Vital statistics, birth certificates, and death. The motion?
Someone.
Trustee Kolar?
Yes.
Trustee Kolar?
Yes.
Okay, dates for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three budget coming up with January three, January eighteenth, February seventh, February fifteenth. And I'd like to adopt it on the fifteenth, so not, not the sixteenth. If need be, we need to ignore these. Deputy Gomorpi Townes for that. It's really boring our meetings.
I'm used to it.
If we need to, especially if it's some reason. So Chief, Chris, wishlist. I guess I can know that we want to get a hot box next year. And we deal with cars. We have a lot of cars, I noticed the other day.
Well, that's the next subject we're going to talk about.
Oh, I didn't even see that, okay, good. All right.
Trustee. Finish his wishlist. I think number one is to move upstairs, I think, that's the number one wish list.
Yes, I did speak to an appraiser today, he's going to be giving us this price by the end of the week.
Oh, different appraiser than the one I did?
A different one, yeah. So we're working on twenty-seven hundred, so anything less than twenty-seven hundred, so.
Two hundred.
I should have it by the end, but I was given that this person's gentleman from maybe next door, Kevin Dunn, first name is Kevin, he bought Tunnell Insurance. He didn't, he's so hard to come by, a professional appraiser.
One of them died. There's a little colony you just passed by.
Oh, I believe he didn't form a contract.
He didn't die after he looked at the bill, did he?
No, he never saw the bill.
So once we have the numbers on the appraiser, then we can select. No, not going to pay, not going to pay anymore, the wolf might keep.
It's not in the agenda, but just, Chief, did you send this to them or not yet?
No, it was always going to be before him.
Did you not just discuss some things, talk about vehicles that we have? Specifically, the first item is the old Trailblazer, two thousand eight Chevy. Chief, if you want to jump in?
It's the only black and car, black and white car we have right now. The graphics are terrible on it. The check engine light, it's got a lot of electrical problems, but it runs. We've taken it out of active patrol and we've just been using it to drive to the school and putting Band-Aids on it. We plan on getting rid of it this year when we got the new car. So we received a new car last month, it's in service. So I just want to use it for the Christmas break because we needed everything. And I was going to say, we don't need it in a car. It's a four-wheel drive vehicle, it's got a hundred, what did I say, a hundred and one?
Hundred and one, yeah.
Hundred and one thousand miles, but it does have some electrical issues. The check engine light is on all the time. Every inspection, we have problems, going to get inspected. Some of it's also ABS braking system, has some issues with that. That's why we took it out of, out of service for patrol. But it's a four-wheel drive car, it's an SUV, and it's got air conditioning, power steering, and it's got a roof, so.
Yeah, we both value it, there is some value to the car. We surplus it and we think we can make decent money. Or if you want to keep it for a second vehicle here for the building department or internally.
But that means we have to give back that gray car that we have.
Well, we would surplus one of them.
Trailblazer is better, I think it's better condition than the gray car, but I don't know how much use you have out of the gray car.
I don't think the gray car can use a lot, and obviously they want to drive the Jeep.
Right.
So we would have to strip the car of decals and lettering.
The Trailblazer?
Trailblazer.
Yeah, I was going to. Save money and ask DPW, I'm not busy, or I can call somebody in and.
Because it's just heat gun, you need a heat gun to pull the decals off.
What about the equipment inside?
Everything's out except for the lights, siren, and the computer mount. I think, I haven't asked Chris, so I'm putting him on the spot, but I, I think it's pretty, I think DPW, you can handle that?
I'll do it, I did it to the last car.
Okay.
Yeah, I did it for the Impala.
Do you want to ask John and Susan if it's necessary to have a second car? Are they always out at the same time?
Two is we can have together.
Yeah.
I mean, we could surplus both of them.
And plus, do you want to have a hassle with the color of the gray one then?
I would say that the Trailblazer has to be used. We let it sit a week, even though it's got no equipment in, it's got electrical issues.
It would get money for it, you just trigger it in.
But we did, we paid, they give me some other.
You would probably get five, six thousand for it at all shop.
Yeah, we do that, and I do.
Third of the ways.
Then we could do the gray car too, if you're saying they never use it anyway.
I haven't heard.
I would see Susan, John zoom by over.
Can you get Susan?
I was going to use it for a business, but it'd be a hassle.
I don't know.
So then make a motion to surplus both vehicles?
I'll make a motion.
Well, you're not using it, right?
Trailblazer, we're not going to use it now, probably today.
Just use it.
You'll pull the lights, siren, and all that out of it? And, and the ambulance?
I can get it off.
Okay.
And the gray car.
I think there's a Chevy Impala in it.
The gray car's going to be a little tricky selling.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not going to get as much for that, but.
Trailblazer should give a decent amount. If someone wants to pay for that, you know, pay that much.
So the motion was made by, second by, who knows? Trustee Kolar?
Yes.
Trustee Kolar?
Yes.
And then just part two to this, which I don't even know if Brian really needs permission, he's going to do it on his own, the change in the car over to the tech car?
I think, yeah, we're, so the second car that we're supposed to get this year, the Dodge Charger, should be hopefully delivered in a week or so. Hopefully this week they're starting to work on it. And then we're going to have a two thousand nine or two thousand seven Chevy Impala, a hundred sixty-something thousand, almost, almost a hundred sixty-five now, I think. It's one of our detectives' cars, so. So when that Dodge Charger comes in, I think I'm going to ask, I'm going to come back and probably take all the equipment out of that and do the same thing. I don't know what the value of that car would be.
We won't talk about it now, but that's coming in the future. So we'll have a third car to surplus.
So now we have a lot of cars.
See, there he goes here, that's why I said, when you said it's a lot of cars, that's why I said, not for long.
Although one came from this box, I don't know.
But that's a white.
Detective Sam responsible who works three elevens is driving Chevy Impala. I think that's an O-seven or?
Is that what it answered?
No, he's driving a two thousand eighteen, or a ten, four, second.
What are we using for the schools? Would, would, would it be best if we made it that car?
Which car?
The white one?
No, it's got a hundred and sixty thousand.
But it's only going to the school?
I think we get rid of, we just get, with us getting these two new cars, I think we're going to, we're going to be pretty good. We have a good amount of cars right now. We're, I think, putting money into another car. That car, one of the reasons we're getting rid of the cars is every three months we get serviced, we're spending four hundred dollars on something, you know. The Impala has had power steering problems, had brake problems, and we just keep putting Band-Aids on some of it. I, I, I don't know whether you think that car is worth two thousand dollars?
Maybe?
Yeah, we spent, we just spent like four hundred dollars to get the brakes worked up a few months ago.
Plus in the new budget, you can ask for more for new cars next year, right?
We'll see, we'll see, plus the wear rates are really going to come up.
So it's not like. Yeah, but he's got to keep it going for the program anyway, because to keep updating the piece, yeah.
It's what, the program that we want to get.
Right, exactly.
Instead of spending money on, on trucks that, you know, I think when we started, you needed a tire shop to get into some of the trucks.
Hasn't changed.
But the pickups are new, okay?
We're, by the way, we're fixing one with the broken issue.
I think so, right?
Provenable issue?
Yeah. I don't think I have a choice, because we can't buy, can't get them.
What happened with the ATVs?
We wanted to wait until after the Christmas parade and then, so the office called, dealer today is to see if they would come to DPW and give us an estimate, or if they're going to want us to drive it up there and get an estimate. I'm assuming they're probably going to want us to drive it up there, but I figured because it's on three wheels, that maybe they would send somebody out.
So we need to do some repair on it?
I don't know.
If it is, it's going to be a lot of money, that's an old DPV.
Yeah, once again, I mean, I, yeah, I don't know. I mean, it's, we have insurance on it, we're paying coverage for it, so. I think, I think, I think if, you know, I feel comfortable getting an estimate and saying it's going to cost two thousand dollars to fix, and we know the machine's worth four thousand, we make the decision then. If they say it's cost four thousand and it's worth four thousand, then it's an easy decision.
So like by January, right?
Uh, hopefully, yeah, the service is going to call again tomorrow, so. And I don't know what our deductible is for insurance, if you go through insurance or just maybe they have a replacement value, they're going to give us more, afford it to our machine, and then just do something better.
You said it was two thousand and two?
Two thousand and two. Five hundred.
I'm going to say book value is probably like twelve hundred bucks.
Yeah, maybe, I don't know, it's, it's got four-wheel drive.
So we're getting to a lease payment of cars.
That could be the backup car.
That could be the backup car to the, you know, the school resource office.
Yeah, so it's, maybe next, by next week, you'll have the information, isn't it? And the January review.
Any notice that didn't receive of the, of the, of the, of the, call that we have that DPV?
Two July?
The last thing I had was, I went to, I had Woodcock come down, they gave an estimate for roughly twenty-five hundred dollars for a half the car to be paid for. He didn't want to do a real cheap job on it because he was doing it, Woodcock. It's twenty-five hundred dollars on a car, that's without the lettering. Sean, Sean had told me last year, he had a thousand dollars to add some lettering, change the lettering a lot, change, you know, remove some of the lettering. Because you, even though you're going to make it half taxi, you have to add all that, you have to remove the other stuff, and then you have to adjust some of the decals so it looks right on the front half of the car. So the twenty-five hundred, possibly a few thousand dollars, thirty-five hundred dollars is the estimate that I have right now.
Thinking if merchants want to, I think that was a problem.
I think it's a great idea, I think it's a great idea, it's just I have, I mean, I know, I have a hard time with, with spending that much money on that car that's, it's got problems. And I know we're not driving it, we're not going to park it, but it's, it's got power steering.
So if we could get some sponsors on that, that doesn't cost anything. I'm okay with putting sponsors on it.
Yeah, I mentioned that to Woodcock, and he told me, if I'm going to put my name on it, it's going to look nice. I'm not, you know, we talked about maybe getting a, maybe makeup, but the closest one is?
Fish kill.
Fish kill. You'd have to probably trail it over there.
And that's complete car.
So then we get to a few merchants. I'm going to, um.
If they want to do it.
I'd have to trail the car there because it's not driving, you know, get an estimate.
I think it's a good message.
No, I think it's a great idea, I'm just trying to figure out the right way to do it, it's tough. I know it's something that you want, but I think the days of asking people to.
Help.
Help is, right now is a tough time to ask some businesses to help.
Who is?
Yeah.
So thirty-five, can you put that one? Can you say it? So we've got everything. We do have Mr. Beaker here. So he wants to have his words dedicated.
We're working on it, yeah.
So the process would be that John, Patricia, and he was, did he approve the game?
Chris and John have walked aside, we have a punch list. Punch list is whittling down. And we're not worn down, you know, we're working on it, so the next week or so, a month, it's going to be done.
Okay.
And then we'll go to, John approves the, John and Chris approve that the work is done. We go from performance bond to maintenance bond.
Right.
Where we're still responsible for the maintenance of it for the year. And putting down the, out the school buses we get down the road.
You just want to supply the roads.
That's a big step. I think the homeowners would prefer it too.
Were you able to put the second code on the?
On the black, yeah, that's done.
There was a water main break, you took care of that?
No, there was a little.
And, and hydraulics?
There was a small leak at the valve for a.
John and I talked about that.
Right.
We supposedly talked today and he said he was going to try the pressure testing at the first, just to see.
So let's see, so there was a little water laying in the road, but it's not there now. But there is a little water in the, in the, you know, the valve, valve box, so. We'll see if it's leaking enough. And it's probably not a great time of year to try to fix it, but we'll determine whether it's leaking and we'll, if it is, we'll fix it this spring.
Question came up at the last meeting. Had to do with the concession stand in the garage. What was the deal with that? I'm going to pick your brain. How did that come about?
So we had to do water, okay, so we were supposed to do, the condition of our approval was to sort of have enough supply of water on our own side. So we drilled some wells.
You drilled?
We drilled, it was on our side. And we have two wells that are decent. One well is down at the bottom behind the, behind our pond, we have two ponds.
Right, that's the one.
Down, there's a road now, we have a, you know, road cut in down to that well. That well, at one time, while there was a drought, so that well, the village thought that they would like to hook that up. And they started that process, but then it started raining, so I don't think they were finished with that. I don't know what happened now. But, so we were supposed to have, supply our own water, have enough water to supply our subdivision. And we would have needed to have a wellhouse and treatment on site. So, went back and forth, and I guess what happened was the village wanted this concession stand and we were part of it able to treat water, and bathrooms. And they would consolidate rather than have, there was a well also there. So instead of having.
Is that the third well or the, that's the second one?
No, there, okay, no, there's a second well on Ahern Boulevard in our subdivision.
Right.
On the right side.
Going up the hill?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay.
Well, they're, they're kind of near each other, so as you come in behind the mailboxes or near the mailboxes, there's a well, and that's a huge producer.
That's the deep well, which then you would have to.
Yeah, with our. Not deep, but it's, it's a huge producer, but we didn't have equipment to pump it, to clear it up. So the other well is enough to supply our subdivision.
Which is how many homes, seventy-two?
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one.
So the one well could be usable, this one, the big producer, would have needed some development. I'd had to spend some money to fix it up, but so rather than abandon it, the village said, we'll leave it. Of course, an emergency, who knows? So, so that's what it's, so, so instead of doing our own sewage, our own water treatment plant, the building, and all the equipment that you would need, the village preferred to have a bigger building without the water treatment because they would take care of the water treatment, we'd take care of the bigger building. They didn't need the water treatment by already. So I think that was how that came around.
Do you remember what year that was?
I can't, well, I can't, I could help with that.
Please, if you could. Whatever paperwork you could give us on the decisions that were made back then, right?
The other question is back to the other producer that you said is, is a good one. You said the village ran the pipes or started to run the pipes?
I think they ran, they started to run the pipes.
Because I'm told they, those pipes that actually went all the way down to.
Yeah.
The pump house there, well.
Well, we put, I think we put. When we put our road in, when we extended past the, that area, we put a pipe into crossing, a new crossing, so that it could be tied into, tied into. I don't know, I don't know what the village has done.
Because it, because it couldn't already, the pipes were put in.
Were you here? No, I must be for you.
So theoretically, we could, I bet.
How would you know? The, the pipes are, they're now digging.
Can you camera them, trace them somehow?
But who was back then, our Jeff?
Yes, I walked with him. He told me that they were there, they still exist. He just didn't know if they got disturbed with the new construction.
I, I do know that we put a new crossing in so that it could be connected up open, because it probably wasn't, wasn't in the right spot. It didn't cross the road, it kinda went diagonally or something like that, so. So, we'd have the pipes in on under.
The, back then, it was, um, if my understanding is correct, if I'm wrong, every house, money was going to go into recreation. Is that right?
That's what, um, that's what John comes to us.
We made some, we made some payments to the village, loan some payments. We're paying, every time we get a billing permit, we're paying a sewer fee.
A foot fee?
Three thousand dollars or so. Along with the billing permit fee. And, um.
Didn't know special fees come towards a park of recreation?
I'll have to look back, let's see. Maybe there was some, we did make some, we did make some payments for something after, when you have to go back.
I know that there's always a three thousand milli, the sewer.
That's the end of anybody.
That's the end of it. And billing fees and billing fees. But if that was a recreation, also a recreation for. So, you did the well, the wellhouse, that's what the concession stand building in lieu of putting up pump stations?
No, not a pump station in lieu of a water.
Yeah, yeah, the, um, chlorinating system and stuff, which still leaves recreation funds.
Which still leaves.
Recreation.
So, I don't know if, um, I don't remember if that counterbalanced some recreation or not, the building. It's a big building, so.